Going live.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Good morning. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our November 1st, 2021 Burlington City Council Work Session. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform. This meeting is streaming live on the City of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having any technical or connection difficulties this evening, we ask that you contact our Community Engagement Manager, John Vernon. The number tonight is 336-513-5440 for support throughout the meeting. For staff comments or to address council at the appropriate time in the meeting, we ask that you use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window, or star nine if you're joining us via phone. That will notify our host that you wish to speak and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Valtrudis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pretend Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Very good. Staff presenting, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Unarmed City Clerk Beverly Smith. Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Principal Planner Jamie Lawson.
Here.
Economic Development Project Manager Blake Moyer.
Here.
Recreation and Parks Director Tony Laws.
Here.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Here.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll move on to Item A on our agenda, Annexation Request. Voluntary contiguous, this time we'll recognize Principal Planner Jamie Lawson.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to try to share my screen.
All right, we have that screen up now.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Jamie Lawson, Principal Planner with the City of Burlington. Staff received a petition for voluntary annexation for Zero Hanford Road, which is shown in red here on the map. It is contiguous to the current city limits along Hanford Road. The annexation, just in terms of background, satisfies Condition Number Six of the conditional zoning associated with the McCaw-Mazid burial grounds, which required annexation of the parcel prior to any NC DOT driveway permit issuance for PID 131303. There is no development associated with this request and no utilities also requested. This is a standalone voluntary annexation request, and it is within the city's purview for consideration. Staff recommends approval for this request, and it added a resolution on for the meeting tomorrow night, 11:02, to the consent agenda to set a public hearing date for the November 16th public hearing. I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Very good. Thank you, Jamie. Any questions from City Council? All right. Any objection to adding this to the consent agenda for notice of public hearing? All right. So that will be added to tomorrow night's consent agenda. Anything else, Jamie, on this one?
No, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, we'll move to Item B, CDBGCV Micro Enterprise Allocation Summary. This time, we'll recognize our Economic Development Project Manager Blake Moyer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for having me. I will try and share my screen correctly this time around, presenting to you.
All right. We've got that screen coming up now. It's good.
All right. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about the finishing up of the allocation of the CDBGCV Micro Enterprise Loan Fund that the city operated over the last year and change. Just a short overview of the highlights. Twenty-two businesses in Burlington were assisted with funds. $154,000 in funding was issued to those businesses. This was a forgivable loan paid for with CDBG's COVID relief funds from the CARES Act, and applicants met strict criteria and submitted required backup material. We used an online application portal called Neighborly. Any applicants that had any technical issues in terms of being able to upload PDFs or make PDFs, they just brought them in hand to me, and we got them uploaded from the city office. So there was no digital inclusion issues. Just a short history of council's involvement with fund. An initial $70,000 was approved June 2nd of 2020. Further, $86,000 was approved by City Council on November 17th, 2020. The program's scope was restricted to the micro enterprise definition, just five or fewer employees, and it was also restricted to a $7,000 limit on the loan to have a sizable impact on as many businesses as possible. And we could have done any configuration of funds, but we felt that that was a proper amount, especially with the original amount of funding that we got. We wanted to hit at least 10 businesses, and then we had more funding allocated later to continue impact with the fund. And feel free to stop me at any point with any question. Just a short list of the qualifications a applicant had to meet to have a successful application. Either the owner or 51% of employees had to be low to moderate income, which is 70% of the area median income. For example, a household of one, I believe it's somewhere in the $39,000 range is how much a household can have as a household income to be qualified as low to moderate. As I've stated already, the business had to have five employees or less, and that was including the owner. This must have experienced loss of income due to COVID-19. We compared bank statements from January, February, and March of 2020 to May, June, and July of 2020 to show impact when the state's restrictions were at their peak. That's when salons were shut down. That's when most places were shut down. Everybody was at home, and so that was showing the loss of income. They must have a physical location within the city of Burlington. The business had to be located in Burlington. The owner did not have to live in the city of Burlington, but the business had to be here. And then the business had to have been in operation prior to March 14th, 2020. So as I've stated, this is a forgivable loan, and we already have plenty of businesses in the forgiveness process. Eight have already completed it. This process is where they submit paperwork documenting their expenses that they are using the funds for. The applicable expenses are listed there. Commercial rent or mortgage, salaries to retain or create jobs, utilities, and supplies and equipment. They can submit bank statements and highlight what their expenses were that they're using for, and then we have a cover sheet where they attest that this information's true to their investabilities. Like I said, we've got eight completed, and we'll be following up with them in the next coming months to complete the others. Any questions? I have a couple stats I can give out as well. But a majority of the businesses assisted were either minority or women owned. Eighteen of the successful applicants qualified through owner, low to moderate income status, for qualified through employee, low to moderate income status, and personal care was the most, was the industry that most used funding, which makes sense due to how restrictions were in place last year. Hair salons and beauty salons kind of thing, that's the most used industry for the fund. Any questions?
Blake, do we know, I know you said you're following up with the businesses in the coming months, just kind of a snapshot of how they're doing of these businesses' continued operations? Was this enough to keep them moving?
Yeah, all of them that I've had, that I've spoken with, have kept emailing back and answering my phone calls when I talk to them. They technically have three years to use the funding, so the follow-up within three months or so is what I've been doing as a protocol, just to check with them, see how they're doing. Most of them, yeah, it's, they can always take more, but 7,000 you know, covers rent for a few months. They're covered, you know, gets back salaries if they're, you know, low on supplies or wanted to remodel. They got delayed because of COVID and having to dig into their savings or anything like that. But yeah, most of them are very, they've all been very appreciative and very welcoming to the opportunity. And for all the ones that I've contacted, yes, they're still in operation moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. Any other council questions regarding this staff report?
Blake, how do we publicize this, or in terms of getting information out to the local businesses?
How do we publicize the opportunity for the funding?
Yes.
So we initially started with the Aliment Strong website that us, the Chamber, and a few other local organizations put together, and kind of had the Aliments Community Foundation was out there, our fund, the PTRC funds, all the local ones, all the national and state ones. We used the city's Facebook and Twitter accounts. We sent out mailers. Specifically, we sent out mailers related to the strategic plan and then included information for the micro enterprise loan in those, and that was sent to all business addresses in the city.
Councilmember Owen.
The successful marketing was mouth-to-mouth, you know, somebody who got it, or somebody who knew about it, preferred their person that, you know, works in the next business address over, or just somebody's friend that know, hey, my friend, she runs a salon. I'll send her your information or send her your information. That was the most successful marketing for sure, because it was usually a chain. One would get another, would get another, would get another to apply, so.
Peter, was there something you want to add?
Yes, we also had flyers and information produced in Spanish in addition to English. So we had those flyers distributed through community centers, specifically the Dream Center, but some others. So there was an intentional effort made to make sure that we had bilingual information available.
Thank you.
Recognizing this is one of the first times we've worked as, in a micro enterprise scale, with economic development in the city, were there any big takeaways as far as kind of, if we were to work on this scale again, what you might do or what you might target?
I think for me, one thing is that they exist all the way across the city. The, you know, applicant addresses range from University to Beaumont. I mean, they're all the way across the city. It's not just in certain industries. I mean, there was a computer company that, you know, they do a computer repair and IT work. And that was like one of the employer, employee qualifying businesses. They're all over the place and in different forms, functions, and industries. There's a lot more of them than you think. Most businesses are that way. They're all, I mean, most businesses are small businesses, and then most businesses that people who live in Burlington run are micro enterprises. There's a lot of them out there. Peter probably has some more thoughts on that.
Peter, anything else you want to add on that?
Yeah, I would say overall, the program was effective in reaching its targets. Some things we learned that the intentional marketing, the word of mouth, was very helpful. I think everybody was very appreciative, and if anything, we didn't have enough funding in the, near the end. So this was a program that the funding took a little while to get out, but then once the word got out and folks were aware, it went really quickly. So if anything, near the end of this, we got a lot of calls for potential assistance that we weren't able to meet because we were out of money.
Any other council questions on this?
This is a one-time allocation, guys.
Yeah, this is all originated from the CARES Act, the first.
First part of it.
Yes, and we got it in two different allocations from the federal government. We got one in June and the one in November.
So both allocations have been now marketed out then, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Blake, Peter, we appreciate your updates on this and your work with the community.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to Item C on our agenda, Tennis Center Gazebo, in honor of John Walton. This time, I'll recognize Recreation Parks Director Tony Laws.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. It's an honor and a pleasure to present this proposal to you tonight. For the ones that have not, do not know this, this is a 25th year anniversary of our tennis center. And when it was built, we hired John Walton, who was at the time the women's tennis coach at Elon University, and he came on board, and he started operating this tennis center and promoting it and making it what it is today from the first day on. John's a very hard worker and dedicated to tennis and excellent player, too. But really, a big promoter of tennis in our community. Recently, he retired last year, so we operated the tennis center for the first 24 years. And we have talked among some tennis people in the community and our current tennis director, Randy Scott, and we would like to honor John and all the years of dedicated service he did for us and all the good promotion he did for our tennis center and put it on the map as far as the state goes. He's one of the best in the state, host of high school championships, both girls in the fall and boys in the spring championships every year for I don't know how many years, some other big tournaments he's had over there. So the inside, the 12 court, right in the center, is a two-story structure. It's got a, on the first floor, a small office where the tennis director operates, and then some storage space. And on the top, it's got an observation tower where somebody could go up and observe all four quadrants of three courts each at one time. So we'd like to name this, what we call the gazebo, for lack of a better word. We'd like to name this in honor of John and put a plaque on the side of the building and have a little ceremony for him when we get it ready to do. And it's just a really well-deserved recognition for an outstanding employee that we had that was voted to the game of tennis and really took it a long ways from what we had in our community prior to this, and especially in youth tennis and the middle school program, and lots of kids that were introduced to the game and taught the game by John over the years that he worked here. So we went through the process of taking it through our PAM Committee, Public Art and Memorial Committee, and they endorsed it, went on to the city manager, and now it's in your hands to hopefully make this a reality and really something that's well-deserved for John and all the services he provided for us over the years. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Owen knows John very well and been involved with him at the tennis center, and, you know, hopefully all of you know him from some respect anyway for all the years he's been here. So I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I'm sure Mr. Owen can chime in, too, if I can't answer all of them.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate that. Any questions from council regarding this dedication?
I'll say this, and this is new business in recruiting John for this job. He brought a level of expertise and also public relations to the position that was just outstanding. His efforts with kids of all ages, of all incomes, in working with them, and really teaching the importance of the sport of tennis also, but more importantly, the sport of sportsmanship and playing. I think it's a very deserved honor. John Walton is a wonderful citizen of our community. He's, as Tony indicated, a really very good senior tennis player, nationally ranked. But his efforts in involving both kids and also adults into the tennis program took the tennis center to, as Tony indicated, to a facility where the North Carolina High School Athletic Association uses it for its state championships on an annual basis. So it's, John is just a fine gentleman and did a wonderful job with that facility.
And one thing I failed to mention, too, the tennis center has been recognized by the United States Tennis Association, governing body of tennis in the country, as a center of excellence. So we're very happy to have that distinct, prestigious honor for our tennis center, and John was a big part of that, too.
I do want to mention and thank that we had a number of community letters that were included in the agenda packet regarding this, and I want to thank those individuals for recognizing John and asking for this dedication. I think that means a lot when the community turns around and asks for this kind of dedication, recognizing the hard work and dedication of a leader like John in creating a vision and sharing the joy of an activity like tennis with generations to come.
Absolutely, Mayor. We had some nice letters from some longtime people that's been involved with John and the tennis program throughout his career. And yes, every one of them were unanimous and recommending that the tennis gazebo be named for John.
Any other council comments or questions regarding this item? The request is for this to be in addition, consent agenda item addition to our meeting tomorrow. Any objections to that? All right. That will be included tomorrow. Tony, anything else on this?
That'll do it, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll then move on to Item D, Finance Update and Fiscal Year End, June 30th, 2021. Recognize our Director of Finance and Risk Management, Peggy Reese. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. I'm going to work on sharing my screen. You let me know when you can see it.
It's up now.
Okay. Are the numbers readable, or can I, do I need to make it a little larger?
They look pretty good on our screen.
Okay. This is just a brief report on where we ended the year, June 30th, 2021. Our revenues were ended up at $65,446,834. Our property taxes were a little bit more than budgeted, and our sales tax was a little bit more than budgeted. I don't know if you remember, but in April or May of 2020, we were dealing with COVID hitting and everything shutting down. So we were conservative in where we budgeted our numbers. And I firmly believe that because of the internet sales tax that was instituted in August of 2018, that really made a big impact on our sales tax number for the year ending June 30th, 2021. So those are the two big items for our revenues, for the expenditures. Again, we ended up with $59,244,042. Again, we were budgeting during the peak of when COVID was hitting us and the economy was being shut down due to COVID, and so we budgeted conservatively. And like events for recreation that were not going to happen, not be able to have, we reduced the budget on those items. You see that we have roughly $2 million, $2.1 million that we did not spend, and the majority of that is two things. Majority of it is capital that we, like the police cars that we ordered, but didn't get in before June 30th of 2021, and also personnel expenses from vacant positions, and also from, we moved about $400,000 in COVID expenses that was able to be paid for by the CARES funding. So we moved those personnel expenses to the CARES fund, and those were when we paid individuals, whether they were out or exposed with COVID. So that's pretty much the general fund. Do you have any questions?
Peggy, the personnel side of this, that you mentioned, that due to people are not having enough candidates for positions, obviously that went through June, but in the early months of the new fiscal year, after July, August, September, and October, is that, are the positions still remain, is it still very difficult to hire people? Are we seeing a more of an increase in terms of potential candidates for those positions?
If you're speaking of where we are this July, August, September of 21, I would say, Harden might want to add on to this, but I would say it is very difficult. The position, the one position that I have, that you, that council unfroze, the budget manager, we've had very few applicants, and I think that's across the board. It's an employees in market right now. You know, there's more, there are many more jobs than there are employees to fill them.
Is that across the board, Peggy, just not in that position that you're referring to, but?
Yes, sir. It's across the board, across the board.
The various departments in the city.
Top to bottom.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Owen, that we would concur, I concur with Peggy's remarks. It is across the board. We see it in our technical positions. I know Mr. None's been looking for folks for months and months in a couple of very highly technical positions. I know we're struggling to fill all our vacancies in the public works divisions that we have. As you know, we are struggling to fill all the police positions that we have. And then I think all of our positions that, any position that has obviously market pressure, where we compete with the private market, those, we're seeing a lot of, a lot fewer applicants than we have in the past. So it is completely across the board.
Okay, we'll go to the water and sewer fund.
Peggy, before you go over, if you, Public Works, is that mainly staff there? Or is there a project that didn't get finished?
That's mainly some capital, but that is, I would say it's twofold. I'm not sure which is higher, but the personnel, they've had a lot of vacant position in the public works area. So I'd say it's public works and capital.
Okay.
Okay, on the water and sewer fund, basically, we have our water revenues and our sewer revenues and our water revenues were about, let me get that page in front, about $655,000 under budget, and our sewer revenues were about $276,000 over budget, and then our
You're going to slide for that, Peggy. We're still seeing that general fund.
Okay, sorry. Let me try that again. How about now?
There we go. Thank you.
Water Resources Revenue, Peggy.
Water Resources. And so the water sales were about $655,000 over. Our sewer revenues were about, I'm sorry, water was $655,000 under our budget. Sewer was about $276,000 over our budget. And then with our, this water and sewer tax development fees really came in very strong. That's something we just really never know when we're budgeting. And again, with the COVID happening, we were trying to be conservative. So that was over as well. So overall budget, we ended up about, right, right on the money, about $74,000 under what we originally budgeted for our revenues. For up here.
Does that include any lost revenue for folks who weren't able to pay water bills? Or is that accounted for in another way?
That would be accounted for in another way. It's write-offs. We bring to council, and I apologize, I can get that for you. I don't have the write-off number on top of my head right now.
Okay. So the fact that the revenues are as they are on the sheet does not, or does recognize?
No, sir. The write-offs would be an expense, and this is just revenues.
Okay. All right. So they are strong in their own regard, regardless of write-offs?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Then if we look at our expenditures, well.
Peggy, can we go back just a minute on water and sewer and the revenues?
Yes, sir.
As the, as the past fiscal year went along, in terms of the impact of COVID, obviously, I know when it, the year before, there was certainly a backlog in terms of some people being able to pay their water and sewer, the enterprise fund bills. But it appears that based on these numbers here, that in fiscal year 2021, that was not nearly the case. Is that fair to say, or was part of those payments possibly coming from other revenues that the citizen might be obtaining as a result of the COVID? Or do you have any idea?
I would say that it's, the, if we look at our aging and what we were owed as of June 30th, 20 versus June 30th, 2021, that number has come way down, significantly down. And I would say that's kind of twofold. One is for those who truly were not eligible or able to make payments due to a COVID circumstance. But the other is when Um but the other is when the governor uh came out with those uh not, that we were not allowed to shut off. On utilities for non-payment, people uh who were certainly eligible and able, people who are able to pay. Heard that as, oh, they don't have to pay. So once we return to uh our standard operating procedures. Uh those people quickly came in and paid and we've had a great reduction in the amount that's outstanding. We also did have monies from CDVG that um paid off some of those who were facing uh difficult circumstances. But those were um high standards to meet. You had to live in a low income, you had to be a low income. Um individual, you had to have a COVID event, you either had to have COVID or lost your job due to COVID or were taking care of somebody due to COVID. So there were a lot of hoops to jump through and when some individuals, a lot of people, when they found that out, they chose not to go much further. But we um have taken advantage of the CDVG, the statewide HOPE program, and now there's another program. That is that we're trying to get individuals to help them with as well.
But the reality of it is, is that the. Uh the water and sewer fund, it 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 fiscal year end. Uh came out in a positive note, is that correct?
I would say, yes, sir.
As an enterprise fund, that's what we, that's always our objective there, yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the revenues?
Just one thing, Peggy, why the difference uh in uh interest on investments, water, sewer versus general fund?
It is because the Water Resources Fund has um more money to invest than the um general fund does.
Just strictly investment balance.
Yes, sir. Alrighty, so now on the expenses, um the expenses totaled twenty eight million, one thirty one. Um and you see that we have three point three million unspent and. All of these large dollars are uh for primarily for capital expenditures for projects that did not get completed. Some of these were carried over into the new year, some of them were set up um. Into um a capital project ordinance fund at the at year end of fiscal year end of June thirtieth, twenty one. And also they do have um. Several vacancies, personnel vacancies as well, so.
Peggy, on the contract work that that on capital work is is uh. Uh and you know, Bob's on the line and on, but Patterson, but uh sorry, I'm sorry, Bob's uh, he's in Pennsylvania, you ain't even bet today, but uh. My question is with the. Um the issue of of employees, did we see a uh? Hadn't that impact any of our contract jobs in terms of going out when we did bids? Did we see a a marketable increase in the cost or did we have enough, or actually do we have enough people to bid on some of the projects?
I know that um I can't remember exactly which projects. I know that that we have had um some. A little struggle trying to get um three bids that we need when we're doing capital projects, but these water and sewer projects are. Um a difficult ti- long time project. You have to get uh engineers to draw up to the specifications. And those have got to be be approved and and then once they're approved, then you um get them. You get them bid out and so it's not, and then it's a long process to complete, so. Uh these are long time projects. That it takes, sometimes takes more than one year and we carry over with a carry forward budget amendment.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the expenses here? Alright, thank you, Peggy. Any other items on this?
No, that's it.
Harden, on the on the personnel, where we're short on personnel, I'm. Certainly in public works, I'm sure we've had some overtimes and people have had to do double duty. But there's still positions that we did not recognize the expense, even though we budgeted it. Is have we, have we done anything to help those employees that are having to? To work more, I mean, granted, they're going to make overtime, but there's a certain amount of disruption, lifestyle disruption as well. What are we, what what do we do for them?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question. I'm gonna ask Nolan to jump in on this. We have, this would wrap up at the end of the last fiscal year, but in the current fiscal year. Uh we've included some things that try to address that. I'll let Nolan talk through. We have some 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 programs we put in place with this new budget.
Um well, I know, sorry for my voice, I'm fighting off a little uh throat thing here. I know last year with the reclass study, um we did make some adjustments there, which has been very helpful uh with employees. Um we've also made some tweaks to um some of our um particularly we're solid ways for developmental increase plan. And we also have a skill-based incentive program there for them. Which helps offset some of those things, which also allows us to show uh employees, you know, that we appreciate them um and the efforts they're making. And of course, just really a big thing that Gary and uh his division heads are trying to do is be active in recruitment. We're trying to fill these positions. Got a lot of uh vacant positions, I think we're about uh across the whole. The public works probably close to fourteen percent, but really heavy uh and solid waste uh with some vacancies that we're actively trying to fill. We're seeing some activity now uh with some of the increases that have been made uh in salaries, so uh things are. Looking a little better in terms of where we're where we're trending, so. And Gary, Gary Smith may be on if he wants to add to that, but that's pretty much, I think, what what he would share.
Nolan, I I I I'll say this, it just this is, you know, just as a user of the uh. At least in my neighborhood, the service has been there. I give the guys, you know, ladies awful lot of credit because I know they're shorthanded. But they sit really seem to be getting the job done and and uh. I'm coming back to what Jim had indicated, that that that's uh, I certainly hope we can reward them somehow because. Fourteen percent uh up up down in terms of employees, that's a, that's a substantial number. I don't ever recall us being anywhere close to that in the past, do you?
Um it's significant, um it's higher than that in solid waste. I will say, you know, uh like you're saying, you just really appreciate. Truly the effort that these guys put in, like in solid waste, the guys are constantly working. Uh overtime, they work Saturdays, they work late during the week. Um supervisors, superintendents are driving trucks. I mean, everybody's all hands on deck. And Gary, if he needs to shift resources from other divisions to help out, but they're getting the job done. And so you just can't show them enough how much you appreciate what they're doing, so.
Harden, what are we doing in terms of trying to recruit people? Are we are we uh specifically? Uh stepping up our recruiting efforts through HR to get people on board?
We are. We've had a couple of specialized events. We had an open house at the public works facility. Uh I know we've even put out our uh uh our big mobile sign out on Church Street. Uh to let people know we have vacancies. We've drawn, we've done all the tactics. Nolan, maybe some things I'm not thinking of. I know we've hit a number of job fairs as well with our HR staff. What what am I leaving out, Nolan?
Um City Works, we've used that, social media, um you know, just different, whatever avenues the HR. Has available to us um in terms of, you know, job hunters uh website, so we're trying to use everything we can. And again, fortunately, we've had uh some some recent uptick, which we were really hoping after July one, when the reclass went in. And our our salaries went up, that we would see some some additional activity. I think it's uh kind of now starting to kick in and hopefully that will continue.
And Mr. Owen, we do have a trend where I think I if I'm, my memory is correct here, I know there's at least three employees that have returned. To our public works department from other communities that left. Uh after the, Nolan mentioned the July one numbers that went into effect. Uh were a lot more lucrative, uh and I know we've had at least three people that returned to the city.
That's that's great. That's good news.
And it looks like Jamie joiners joined the conversation, I don't know. Want her to contribute? Welcome, Jamie.
Uh thank you, Mayor and Council members. Yes, I would just um echo some of the things that Nolan's already shared with the group as well as. Um Gary and I have been trying to work creatively and think of some kind of out of the box things. Um. We've looked at uh some of the certifications that are offered. We've looked at um offering that to our current employees. That um lends to uh Mr. Butler's question about what are we doing for our our folks. We're trying to. Um just kind of help them retool and help them develop professionally as well. Um to try to give them some sort of incentives, but as far as recruiting, we've contacted all, you know, local. Uh employers, we've contacted um Goodwill Industries, we've reached out to just kind of some, a lot of our community partners to try to see if we can. Uh get avenues that we haven't. We placed radio ads, um just, you know, some of the traditional things. So we are, we're trying to touch as many different bases as we can to try to attract some talent.
Jamie, I I know it's difficult to to make this with observation or at least to to answer this question, but. Where we are now and and concerning to the past. In references to people who that who are actually applying for jobs for the city, how far down are we in terms of of what we that we've seen in the past? And where we are now?
Yeah, I would say our overall applicant pools are down. Uh we're just, we're not getting the number of applicants that we once received for our positions. Um just across the board, uh that was mentioned earlier. Um yeah, across the board, just our overall applicant, folks that are applying for our vacant positions. Are down overall. Uh I've reached out to a lot of my colleagues, but unfortunately, we're not unlike some of, you know, any of our neighbors that are around us. They're experiencing those same lack of applicants as well.
Yeah, that's new.
Yeah.
Unfortunate.
It is.
Any other questions from council regarding this agenda item? Jamie, we appreciate you joining in on the conversation. Peggy, anything else you want to add?
No, thank you so much.
Alright, with that, we'll move on to item E on our agenda, our travel travel policy amendments. This time we'll recognize City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mayor, and I believe uh Morgan's gonna help me with the slides. And Council, what you uh received in your packet was a a copy of the travel policy dated October twenty seventh. That is our most recent. Versions, I'm gonna be working from that and obviously if we have some additional comments and edits. Uh we'll make those and and seek council guidance this evening about how soon you may want to take action on this item. So let me walk through uh the highlights of the policy with you now. Um as you see from the timeline here. Uh the the original policy was uh January of two thousand twelve. It was updated in January two thousand fourteen at a. Per diem arrangement for police travel because of the volume some of the the folks in police have of travel. I think Finance and Police agreed back at that time. Uh that would be simpler. We do leave that intact in the new policy, so that would continue as is. Uh just just for the police department. So and what you have now is an update uh and and now sort of dated November two thousand twenty one. Um and so that's that's what we're working on from here, so um next slide, please. So the purpose of the travel policy, I think uh is to make sure folks that are representing the city as they travel and go to training or go to professional conferences. Uh or have some business uh the city needs to conduct elsewhere, don't endure a financial loss to do so and then set out the parameters. On how they're gonna get their funds uh reimbursed and and set some guidelines for to make sure they use their funds wisely. Uh we also, you know, as as goes without saying, we want to provide for moderate accommodations and for meals for folks as they're out and about representing the city. Uh we obviously want all our travel to have a clear public purpose and benefit and be obviously working towards the city's mission. Uh and have a true uh purpose that lines up with our city's needs. Next slide, please. Um so the reporting requirements uh for our employees must be approved in advance. That complies with some of our kind of general statutes. You must have Department Head approval. Uh and then if Department Heads are traveling, they have to have uh approval from the City Manager or their respective Assistant City Manager. And then all out of state travel, we delegate that out uh as as Nolan, Cheryl and I divide up our workload and Bob Patterson. Uh those uh out of state travels are approved um by City Manager, Assistant City Manager. Travel forms uh have to be turned in by Finance. There's a lot of rules spelled out in the documents, uh both existing and newly proposed documents about how that might. How that needs to happen. P cards, our purchasing cards can be used for hotels, meals and transportation. And uh Finance can request reimbursement of any excessive or non-city related expenses. So if inadvertently gets paid for, uh Finance has had to go to employees in the past and it will continue in this policy to go back and and reclaim those dollars. Next slide, please. Uh the uh various provisions of travel policy that may be of interest, there's no double dipping. Or acceptance acceptance of outside per diem payment if you're on city payroll or on city time. Uh personal non-business expenses are not allowed. These things would seem to be um. Uh sort of self-evident, but it's good to go ahead and spell them out in the policy. We're not gonna reimburse anybody for movie rentals or bar bills or. Entertainment while they're traveling, that sort of thing. Uh just uh puts all the uh, all that is defined in the policy. Honorarians and stipends should be declined, so if you're offered that, you should decline that. Uh and then there's a provision in the policy that if the person is insistent, then the the employees advise to seek the guidance of their department head on how to how to manage that. Any special circumstances uh and exceptions can be considered by Department Heads. As you know, when you lay out a set of rules. There's always a strange situation or you get into an odd travel situation and we give our department heads some. Some discretion in how to help interpret that for their staff members, uh if there's a unique situation that pops up. And then obviously the reports need to be turned into finance within thirty days. Next slide, please. Um and then so here are some of the uh the meat of the policy. It gets around lodging and hotels. Uh should try to get government and group rates. You should choose the conference hotel or a medium tier hotel. And uh make sure that, you know, every day you're there, there's actual city business being conducted. Uh spouse or children may travel if there is no additional expense. Uh next slide deals with meals, uh and obviously we uh what Finance Department has found to be uh most appropriate and helpful is to use the US. General Services Administration or GSA rate uh that's allowed for meals. That has helped us in our per diem arrangement with the police department. That does change uh year to year as inflation changes and also it differs based on region. Uh so it gives us a little guideline, a guidance uh of folks that are studying that uh that we use. And then obviously alcoholic beverages are not reimbursable uh and travel advances for meals may be allowed uh with special circumstances. So getting to ground travel, uh we encourage folks to use city vehicles uh if at all possible. If they do have to use their personal vehicle, the mileage is reimbursed at IRS rates. It's calculated from the employee's uh place of work. Uh unless their home is closer to the destination, then we calculate it from there. Uh rental cars, we are, we advise to to seek a compact or midsize. Uh and obviously get, you know, the old, everyone who's rented a car, uh refuel that on the way back. The city's not gonna pay the exorbitant fees that no or. Companies charge if you don't refu- refuel. Uh and then we provide some guidance for public transportation, taxi, et cetera. Uh and and advise folks to use the least expensive method. Uh in regards to air travel, uh we advise folks to use the least expensive option. Be that economy or coach. Next slide, please. Um and then the additional fees or upgrades, if if you need, if need that, choose to do that. That's on the employee and that is completely their responsibility. And then last slide, uh and finally, the other expenses, uh it's it's hard to imagine a policy talks about phone calls, but occasionally somebody might find themselves. In a place uh where their cell phone's not operable, but we we have some provisions for that. Uh and then the 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 guidelines, if you do for some odd reason have to stay over seven days, some help with laundry or dry cleaning. And then if you get into an emergency about office supplies, we give some guidance about tips and then give guidance about seminar and conference fees. Uh next and final slide, uh and just want to thank our our finance staff, Peggy Reese, Casey Langley, Tracy Bowes. And and the rest of our finance team, Kristy Gueranger, uh have worked on this uh policy. Appreciate their work on this and and moving this along for us. Um and thank them for that. And then council, I'm open for questions. Uh Ms. Reese is here as well to help. And then ultimately, we would like your advice on how to proceed. There are a handful of things that were mentioned in the agenda cover sheet. Uh if council is interested. Uh we could move right away on this. We could obviously bring this back uh tomorrow. We could bring this back on the sixteenth or we could delay action. Uh until uh a future uh future month, so we are open and and ready for conversation.
Very good. Thank you, Manager. And I think uh Councilmember Ward, you had provided a memo. Do you want to address that?
Yes, uh Mayor, I uh really, I think, I think it's fairly self-explanatory. In a couple of sections of the travel policy, it says. As you know, in accordance with other components of the city personnel policies, I thought it may be good to just anchor that in a city code. And I've really just paired the language from, you know, the policy into two particular codes. I I I think it fits there and I I think it'd give us. Uh I don't know, a little more, uh I don't know, a little more, a little better way to deal with it in the event that the problem, so. Uh I think it's fairly routine. I don't know, I don't know that there's a problem, but I uh I I I just, I've just found over the course of. Uh, I think it's fairly routine. I don't know, I don't know that there's a problem, but I, uh, I, I, I just, I've just found over the course of the years that if you have something in the city code, it has a, has a little more full force and effect. So I would just offer that up and I'd ask it to be considered for adoption at the time the travel policy is adopted.
Very good. And just to clarify, that is the, uh, the two sections, section two dash two forty-seven and section two dash two, or three thirty B.
Correct.
Language as prepared in the menu or the memo is what you'd like. Okay. All right. I'm, I'm amenable to that. Council, any questions regarding council member Ward's memo?
Would it be, Bob, would it be appropriate? Uh, I'd like to look over that and maybe got a few questions, maybe vet through them a little bit. Could we have a little time before we actually, maybe next meeting before we?
Yeah. Yes, that's fine.
Or Harden, would it be the intent that this policy would be for city employees and council? Or, I mean, how does council come into play on travel?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Butler. At this moment, uh, the, the policy is written, uh, for employees um, and others that may be traveling on city business. And, and the way I interpret that would be if we had members of boards or commissions, you know, if a planning commission member, you know, was attending a travel, a traveled, uh, conference in Raleigh. If we had other, uh, uh, members traveling for some reason, this would give some guidance to them. Uh, at this moment, I don't envision it applying to city council. I would look to city council for guidance on that. We could, we could add a section that deals with that, but at this time that's not included.
I mean, I think if we're going to have a policy, I wouldn't want to, uh, maybe say, do as I say, not as I do. I want to be sure that we were aligned with what staff, we're asking staff to do. Not that there's an awful lot of travel on our behalf, at least not, not, uh, uh, an egregious amount, but it seems to me that this should be in alignment.
I would, I would recommend that also. I think that's only fair. It would be, it'd be the same, same policy for elected officials as it is for the city employees.
Yeah, I would say that having traveled with the city through representing our council at National League of Cities and, uh, North Carolina League of Municipalities for a number of years. Um, all these guidelines have been what I've been using in practice and are very workable, uh, for council travel. So I support you applying them both for employees and for council.
And, and Bob's memo, he mentioned asking David Huffman for suggestions, um, about the amendments. And I, I would like the time for him to look that over and, uh, give us his.
That'd be good.
His idea. For the next.
So we would, uh, put that on the agenda for our November sixteenth meeting?
I think that's fine.
Definitely good.
David said, gave you enough time.
David, do you want to mute?
Yes, that'll be fine. Thanks.
Very good. Any other council discussion questions on this?
Mayor, I'll make the, uh, well, I will, I will work with Ms. Reese and we'll make sure to amend language wherever necessary to make sure elected officials are included in the, the group. Just a positive.
I did have one other item. I know you mentioned, uh, in the rental car items, uh, gas as one kind of suggestion to staff to improve. Is there anything regarding insurances on those cars? I know for many travelers, using a, a business credit card or something covers that insurance cost rather than the upcharge. And so I'd imagine a recommendation to staff there as well could be helpful. Whether our P card covers that.
Yep. I'm reviewing that now, Mayor, the automobile rental. I'm not, I don't think we address insurance, but that would be a good. My guess is employees are probably wondering what to do there. Should they take the insurance or not? Um, we need to, uh, make a determination. We'll have that ready as a, as an edit as well.
Very good.
Most probably have a rider on their policy that does cover since regardless of who the car is owned by, that most of the, most of the insurance liability is on the driver. So there will probably be limited areas where, uh, that may not be the case, but I would say the significant portion probably have riders to cover.
Uh, just to provide some guidance there to help our employees understand what's expected during travel.
Peggy, any questions to clarify that? So we can get that language. We, any comments or clarifications?
No, I think we can, um, I think we're probably, I'm ninety-five percent sure that, uh, our insurance, our, uh, city insurance does cover, uh, rentals, but I will double check that because, and that way it is very expensive at rental car places. So we can make sure we have a statement in there to, to decline that coverage.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Any other council questions regarding the policy? All right. That will come back around on our November sixteenth meeting. With that, we'll move on to item F on our agenda, Fawcett Avenue Water and Sewer Project. This time we'll again recognize city manager Harden Watkins. And we've got a screen share coming up from Nolan Kirkman.
Just a moment, we changed folders. Thank you, Mayor. Um, and council, I'm doing this, uh, presentation on behalf of, uh, Todd Lambert, city engineer, Bob Patterson, water resources director, and Nolan's agreed to help me with the, the graphics this evening and, and any questions. Uh, Mr. Lambert and, uh, Mr. Patterson weren't able to join tonight, so I'll do the best I can if you have technical questions with Nolan's help. Um, this is the Fawcett Avenue Water and Sewer Project. It extends the city's water and sewer lines into a residential area in the Glen Raven community. You can see that on this, uh, on this diagram, uh, the red and blue lines along Fawcett Avenue. There is no water sewer in this area now for these residential, uh, um, homeowners. This has been discussed in 2020. It was discussed again in 2021. Uh, staff believes it's ready for action now. Uh, for, as part of, uh, our fiscal year twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. The funding, uh, recommended and, uh, estimated is about $300,000. Obviously that will depend on bids when those come in. It extends the water line about 1,120 feet and the sewer line 940 feet on Fawcett Avenue as it is the map in front of you. Uh, it was included in the council approved budget for FY 2021. However, due to shifting priorities during the pandemic, as we all hunkered down to try to survive, uh, the project did not proceed, um, and the funds were transferred to a capital project fund via the year end budget amendment approved by, and that was approved by council in June. So I think one could say council has approved this item once, maybe two times. I just wanted to be clear. I think at staff level, we just wanted to, to just go, I guess, do a belt and suspenders approach and just make sure we're headed in the right direction here. Um, as I said, we, uh, what pause, another reason for the pause earlier, uh, we presented this to city council for potential funding under the city's America Rescue Plan Act, the ARCA funds. We talked about that during the May third work session. The discussion was a continuation of our April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one work session. As you remember, we had a focus session over at the Carnotl Center where we talked about ARPA projects. And, and we were hopeful that projects like this, and we have some other areas on the edges of the city and areas that got missed by the, you know, development of water sewer lines with kind of the, the private market. Uh, and we were hopeful those would be eligible for ARPA and we're waiting to see. And as we discussed earlier tonight, we're still waiting on ARPA guidance from U.S. Treasury that makes it clear. Uh, we do believe and as do our external, uh, technical experts that we've consulted with, these type of projects are not going to be eligible for ARPA. So that brings us back to getting this project off hold and getting it moving forward. The residents, uh, obviously would benefit sooner as opposed to later to having water and sewer in this area. I know there have been some, um, quality, uh, water quality problems in the area. Um, so you have memos in your packet from, uh, Mr. Patterson, water resources director and city engineer Todd Lambert that give a few more details than what I provided tonight. Uh, if council is ready to move forward, the engineering department's ready to finalize construction and permitting documents and proceed with bidding and construction phases. There's a proposed timeline in your packet. We are quite, uh, uh, ready to go, uh, as, as soon as council says go. Uh, based on weather, bad weather, uh, the project could start in the early spring, you know, once ground falls out and folks can get, uh, in place and ready to go. Um, just a reminder, we did also examine, this is not eligible for CDBG funding. That was another reason for one of the delays. We did some neighborhood surveys in the area, uh, to, to learn about whether this might be eligible for CDBG funding and it was not. And again, I mentioned, uh, the, the lost time around the, the ARPA and waiting for U.S. Treasury guidance. Um, so we are ready to go. Staff would recommend, uh, the city move forward with the installation of these water and sewer lines using funds set aside for this purpose that are currently in capital project fund. Ms. Reese can elaborate on that if you want more details. Um, and then I guess at this point we would like to see council guidance on when you would like to do that. Three options, uh, you could set, uh, a formal action item for tomorrow's council meeting. You could set a formal action item for November sixteenth. Or, uh, I believe we would all be, uh, uh, satisfied if council just wanted to sort of give us a thumbs up, uh, informally tonight and say, get, get going on this. So with those, uh, those are our three options, uh, Mr. Mayor, and I'll yield the floor back.
Very good. Thank you, manager. Any questions regarding this item from council?
Let me, let me just say this, that when, when the annexation of Glen Raven occurred, uh, uh, gosh, David helped me here, mid two thousands, what, six, seven, eight? Is that correct?
I think it's back in ninety-four.
Yeah. Well, well, yeah, but, uh, yes, it was, but then in terms of, of, of the expansion in reference to services, uh, I remember I met up at the Paramount Theater. It was at some point in time about that, but what, I, I, I think this, this thing is now to a point where we owe this to this community, um, not only for the expansion of the water and sewer services, but also for public safety. Uh, not only with just police, but also with fire. That community, uh, was all in on the annexation. It's one of the few communities that we've ever had that was quite as, as excited about being annexed because they, they needed services readily. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm very much in favor of moving forward with this if we possibly can.
Thank you, council.
I agree with Harold on that. Um, I think it's just a, if, if it's already there, the budget's already there. It's just, I'm good with the thumbs up and let's roll.
I, I agree with that because I think probably since it's been in the budget, we explored all the other means of financing. I think it's a project that, you know, really sorely needs to be done. So I would say move forward.
Mayor Protem, any questions or thoughts?
Uh, Noah, just, I just wonder if we've done any, uh, anything like this before at this level. Unusual or is this, uh, something that we typically do?
No, in my recollection, we've had smaller dollar amounts for less parcels, but the, the exercise and the decision-making process I would think was the same. It was just not as many, not as much money, but not as many parcels at one time.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's true, Jim, because when the annexation laws were changed, it, this, this, it, it, they, that, that had a substantial impact on, on what you could do going forward. Uh, this, this annexation though was just, uh, was so unusual in, in many ways in the sense that the community was, uh, so much in favor of it. It was, uh, uh, it was, you know, I, I, I think their interest and then their need for utilities and their need for, for public safety. Uh, I believe this is just, uh, a commitment that the city had made back at that time and something we need to follow through on now.
Yeah, and we've done this in the past with CDBG funds. Um, and I remember vividly asking, uh, Harden and Nolan to look into that, and I think they did. And, and it was close, but not quite, didn't quite meet the criteria. Um, but it was, it was very close.
I think these residents have been waiting a long time for this, so I think.
Yeah.
The thumbs up.
And I think there's, if I remember right, Bob was talking about too, that this helps create a circular flow of redundancy there that reduces some stagnations in the lines too. So it does benefit the already connected customers in the city too.
Yeah, really. Yeah. I think it's going to help water quality.
Yep.
Well, yeah.
Um, so hearing consensus from council, is everyone all right if we give staff the thumbs up to proceed on this as a stance?
Good for me.
I'm fine.
Very good. Harden, any other questions from council regarding?
That's great. Thank, yeah, that's great. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate the support. Uh, Nolan will advise, uh, Mr. Lambert when he returns to the office and we will get the bids out on the street. Uh, maybe one day this week. Thank you all for the support.
Much appreciated. All right. But then we'll move on to item G, boards and commissioners reports. Looks like we don't have any unless anything's changed there. So, uh, city manager, any final reports?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, a couple of items. Um, one is, uh, uh, if we haven't pushed out the email, we'll push out an email that came over today from Alamance County government. Uh, they are, they decided, um, on October eighteenth that they were going to have a meeting on November tenth at six PM, uh, to receive input on how the county's America Rescue Plan funds, uh, these are county funds, how they would be used to, to benefit Alamance County residents. Uh, they're particularly looking for, uh, feedback from the public and for, and from nonprofits in the community. They don't anticipate making any spending, uh, decisions that evening, but want to, uh, capture that input. We'll make sure that, uh, Ms. Lassiter has already reached out to county staff and will help them publicize that meeting. I know there were a, a number of nonprofits in the, in the community that expressed, uh, interest in an opportunity to comment. And so there's some details on that. So we're excited about that. We'll help them, uh, get the word out there. And they've been, uh, great partners and involved us in that conversation all along the way. Second item I have is, uh, to ask council's permission. We have an item that, uh, was originally, uh, planned for action at the October nineteenth meeting. It was one of the only items we had that night, uh, and it didn't get included on your agenda for tomorrow. It, it's a fairly simple item. It is acceptance of a $1,000 grant from National Recreation and Parks Association. Um, and that is for the Pollinators Bio Blitz Campaign, and we were selected, uh, this year, uh, due to Melissa Hous, who works in our Parks and Recreation, Recreation and Parks Department. Her efforts at the $1,000 grant, uh, Ms. Reese, uh, needs a budget amendment on, formally on the agenda to accept that. But, uh, I felt pretty confident telling staff, I think everyone is for the bees and for bees being able to pollinate things. So I did not think this was a controversial item. So with council's permission, we will add this to the consent agenda tomorrow night.
Any objections from council for adding the bees to the consent agenda tomorrow? All right. Harden, anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Much appreciated, manager. Council, any other comments on tonight's meeting? All right. With that, uh, council will be adjourned until seven PM tomorrow night.
Seven thirty.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Seven thirty, isn't that right?
Thirty.
Seven thirty. Thank you. So, all right. Everyone, take care.
All right. Not all. See you tomorrow evening.